Gold Beach, nature's wild side. Have a board meeting at the Oregon coast. Gold Beach. Find out more at visitgoldbeach.com.
Everybody please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We are two republics, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind. Thank you. You may be seated. Roll call for you. Larry Brenner, position 2.
Anthony Puglone, position 3.
Becky Campbell, position 4.
Tammy Kaufman, position 5.
Carl Popoff, Mayor. Counselor Madison will not be here tonight. She has a conflict with work-related, I believe, training. And so she has been excused. And we also have, of course, as always, our Administrator, Jody Friss. I want to just say something real quickly. I have been suffering a little bit from a cold that may have become a virus, or not a virus, but a, at any rate, or it could be just allergies heading in. So if I starts coughing a bit, please don't be alarmed. And if it gets too bad, I'm just going to go into my office and peacefully pass away there. So at any rate, if you hear any of that, that's the reason why. And with that, and also something real quickly, and Counselor Kaufman, we, I suppose I can wait until we get to it, but I'm not going to. We're supposed to be reviewing a possible draft ordinance to ban single-use plastic bags within the city. That's going to be tabled. And the reason for that is that the state and the House of Representatives already passed their version of one which would be statewide. From what we understand, it is very, very likely that the Senate will also pass it. And I have no doubts that they both pass it, that the Governor will sign it. So I do not see where it makes any sense whatsoever for us to go through all of that when the state is on their way to making us do something with it. So with that in mind, and that out of the way, we have, Matt, you are going to be doing a little bit of this planning group, this Third Housing Needs Advisory Committee review, Housing Strategies Report.
All right.
The show is yours.
Thank you. And thanks for having us. And I have with me Brendan Buckley from Johnson Economics. So I'm going to give most of the talking, and then if you have any hard questions for me, I'm just going to punt them to Brendan. So that's how it's going to work up here today.
Well, yeah.
Got to delegate, you know? So that's what we do. So I'm going to kind of walk you through a summary of this document that we sent out in advance of a meeting, this Housing Strategies Report. Before I do that, just kind of a quick update on where we are in this process for you, and then we'll walk through a pretty brief PowerPoint presentation, only a dozen slides, so I'm keeping it mercifully not too long tonight. So in terms of where we are in the process, the first time we met with you, actually by phone, we reviewed results of a problem, or actually, the first time we were here, second time by phone, third year. First time, we reviewed results of a preliminary draft buildable land inventory and housing needs analysis projection, got comments. We also had, got some detailed comments and discussion with Tammy Kaufman, updated those documents, presented that information the last time via phone, as well as kind of the comparison between projected housing needs, future housing needs, and supply of buildable residential land to help meet those needs. So we did that, talked about that. Since that time, we updated that housing needs analysis document to include that comparison of housing need and land supply. We haven't made other changes to the, have not made other changes to that document, and we had already kind of gone through a couple of rounds of revision to the buildable lands inventory report and maps. So that's pretty much the same as what we had previously sent you. And then subsequently drafted this Housing Strategies Report, so that's what we're going to spend the time talking about today. And I would say just interrupt me, ask me questions as I go along, if you would like to do that, but we're holding to the end. It's up to you.
Yes. Is there feedback?
Yes.
Not much, but I can even do that.
Carl, I think I'm going to, can you get it with your boom, do you think?
I hope so.
Okay.
I'll let you not turn it off.
Because that's kind of what I was afraid of.
That's way better.
Yeah, it's this mixer thing, and I don't know how to use the mixer thing. So are you able to get it?
I'm picking up.
Okay.
All right. And are you good?
Yeah, if you just cue me and I'll do the slide.
All right, so, next one. So what's in this document are several things that would essentially are kind of the last or our end products for you all are a set of adoption or hearings-ready materials. In kind of the memorandum of understanding between the city and the state and our agreement with the state, that's not defined in a whole lot of detail. So it basically just says that. So I have been talking, we have been talking to other jurisdictions and also the state about, okay, what might be a good set of materials to help people move forward with essentially updating the housing chapter, the goal 10 chapter of their comprehensive plan. So what we identified was some narrative that you can incorporate in your comprehensive plan that would describe kind of some of the key points and findings related to housing needs and conditions, a set of updated comprehensive plan policies, references to the more detailed reports that we've been working on, and then a list of potential measures or strategies that the city could implement over time to address the future housing needs that we identified in the report. So that's what we would anticipate giving you all when we're done here. And so this Housing Strategy Report starts to consolidate most of that information, although we've got a little bit more work to do, and I'll talk about that as we kind of go forward in the presentation. But that's what we're anticipating. Hopefully, that'll make sense to all of you and to Jody, and that'll work, but we're, if you have sort of other thoughts, happy to hear them tonight. But that's kind of what we're going to talk about here tonight with the rest of the presentation.
So this is still a work in progress.
Still a work in progress, and ultimately, what we'll give you is something that you could use to take forward to update your comprehensive plan and also to adopt, whether it's changes to your development code or strategies related to funding. I think of sort of the housing measures or strategies as kind of a menu of things that you can move forward and do, and we'll try to give you enough information to, you know, allow you to do that. And if there's things in here where you say, hey, we'd really like a little more information on that, let us know that, because our next step will be to refine this document we've sent you and then give you a final version. And I think likely, and Jody and I haven't talked about this, but we've got kind of in our schedule, one more meeting scheduled with you, we would maybe do that one by phone again, and just, we would update our documents, send them to you, and if there's anything else we need to talk about to get them all the way final, we'd do that in early June. So that's kind of our anticipation. Does that generally make sense? Sound reasonable?
Thank you.
Good. All right. So, and next one. So the, kind of the first thing we did here, not the first thing, but one of the things we did here was just take a look at your existing comprehensive plan policies related to housing. As we work on these kinds of projects for other jurisdictions, there's kind of a checklist of policies where we think it's important for cities to have policies that say and do certain things within their comprehensive plan. So we looked at your policies, and some of the things in the checklist, we thought, yeah, you've got some good policies around that, we don't recommend any changes or any additions. In other cases, we thought you could probably strengthen some of this language or add some language related to specific things. Again, it'll be up to you as you move forward to kind of look at that and decide how much of that policy language you think is important. What we'll do as a follow-up to this meeting is actually draft some proposed comp plan and policy language for you, so you'll have that as kind of a starting point for future discussions. What we've done up to this point is said, here's the areas where we think you could add some things, and here's some sample language, but what we'll give you at the end of the day is some proposed updated language for you to discuss down the line. So the things that we sort of noted, that we thought you could kind of beef up or add some more language on or listed on the screen here, just a little more emphasis on kind of housing for a full range of households and with a full range of income levels. That kind of is what the state goal 10 language talks about. And the reality is that for people with lower or moderate incomes, that's kind of where the most public intervention or assistance for subsidy is needed, so we think it's important just to recognize that in the plan. Supporting partnerships with, whether it's nonprofit organizations, county organizations, state organizations, that's a good thing to sort of call out in your comp plan. Some discussion, if you allow mixed-use development, or if that's a thing you want to support, so that's a mix of residential and commercial rental uses, that's a good thing to have some underlying policy language about. You allow accessory dwelling units. There are some forms of housing that we refer to as missing middle of housing, that's duplexes, triplexes, cottage cluster housing, kind of completes the range of housing from single-family detached housing to apartments, so it's, I think, good to have some language about those types of housing in the plan. Affirming consistency with the federal fair housing law is a good thing to have some policy language about. Talking about updating your buildable lands inventory periodically, so you don't, you know, not necessarily waiting 20 years until you are out of buildable land, but doing that more regularly. And then finally, to the extent short-term rental housing is an issue in your community, and you think there may be some need to examine that in more detail, potentially regulate it, that's another policy, that a kind of policy that particularly in communities along the coast or other kind of destination communities, it is an issue in a lot of places, and some places say, hey, we need to look at that. So those are the types of policy language we think would be helpful to include in your plan ultimately. So we'll, we've got some sample language in the draft report, but we will draft some essentially like strike-through underline amendment language for your comp plan for you to take forward later on. And you'll have other chances to talk about that, but we'll give you kind of a starting point. So that's that one. And the next one. So also in this document, we have just up near the front, it's on pages 2 to 6, some of the information that came from the housing needs analysis that Brendan's firm prepared. So we just kind of pulled out the highlights, stuff that we think would be appropriate, kind of the appropriate level of detail to ultimately include as narrative in your updated comp plan, if you're updating or that section, the housing section of your comp plan. There's some additional language that's not in this document yet that I think would be good just to kind of set the stage for talking about Gold Beach and specific needs and issues, and so we need to probably do a little more work on that section. But it gives you a sense of kind of what that chapter might ultimately look like in terms of just some findings and narrative about conditions. So there's that in the document, and, let's see, also included in there, you know, is the discussion of the comparison between future needs and land supply, and again, just a little bit of information about the land supply itself. So that's the kind of information we included there to think about. And I sent this kind of to Jody to send you at about the same time, so Jody gets to review this and give us her thoughts. Everybody, well, we're interested in everybody's thoughts, but we haven't gotten her comments yet, so that's just kind of heads up. Next one. So then the rest of this document talks about some specific strategies to address some of the housing needs we identified, and including some of the provisions in your city's development code, so I'm going to kind of talk through these. I'm going to, some of these I'm going to combine in terms of the slides, so I do not have 14 more slides, but I'm going to talk through these at a fairly high level. But again, just let me know if you have questions as I go through this, and I will stop and answer them. So next one. So in terms of the urban growth boundary, in some of, in some places, when we do this comparison of how much land you need in the future to meet housing needs and what type, in terms of what type of zoning designation and how much land you appear to have in terms of a supply, we may find that you have a shortage. We did not find that here, so we don't have findings that would support a UGB and urban growth boundary amendment at this time, but there's not sort of, at some point in the future, you could find the need to do that. If you got to that point of looking at expanding your urban growth boundary to bring in more land, there's some things you would need to do. First, you would have to look at, you would have to look at what are called efficiency measures, and you would have to consider different ways to use land within the boundary more efficiently before you expanded it. You wouldn't necessarily have to do all those things, but you'd have to consider them. And that's essentially what the state administrative rules and statutes say. And some of the things I'll talk about in the rest of the slides would kind of count as efficiency measures. So that's one to think about, thing to think about. You would also have to show potentially that you had, if you were looking at an expansion because it was going to be difficult to serve areas within the UGB, you'd have to make those findings, that there were really, no, there was no reasonable way to serve those areas. And then finally, when you go through an expansion, there are sort of a host of specific state guidelines and rules you have to follow in terms of identifying and evaluating specific expansion areas. So this is sort of a potential long-term strategy if you get to the point where you are short of land in terms of you don't have enough in the boundary to meet the projected long-term need. So, next one. One of the things that we noted the last time we talked to you all was that there potentially was a shortage of land zone for, in your lowest-density, single-family zone to accommodate the total need for that form of development, for detached, single-family homes. What we heard from you all and Jody was, well, you're 2R zone, you also allow single-family detached housing in there. We can sort of think about those two as a combined supply of land that can accommodate that type of housing, as well as some of these kind of medium-density types of housing, duplexes, triplexes, things like that. So if that's the case, and that's kind of how we've written the report when we updated it, there's not necessarily a need to rezone land to accommodate future needs here. Again, in some of the communities we're working in, we do find that, and then we have to talk about, okay, if you're going to rezone some land, what are the things you need to think about? And that's kind of what the last set of bullets on this slide talk about. You're not, I don't think, at that point, so again, this could be a thing you look at in the future, but at this point, we're not showing the need to do that. Next one. This next one has a lot of bullets on it, it kind of combines a couple of different sections in this Housing Strategies Report. We took a look at your zoning code in terms of kind of minimum lot sizes in each zone, particularly the ones that are within the city, 1R, 2R, 3R. In each zone, what are the minimum lot sizes? What's that translate into in terms of density? What are the different types of housing you allow in those zones? And we looked at what we were projecting in terms of the needed mix of housing, and we made some observations about the potential need or value to make some changes to some of those things. When we looked at kind of the densities allowed, particularly in your 3R and in your 2R zones, and the minimum lot sizes required, the minimum lot sizes are frankly at a size that makes it really difficult or not very financially feasible to develop certain types of housing. And if you really want to have opportunities for those types of housing, you probably want to think about changing some of those, those minimum lot sizes. So we identified that as a potential future strategy in your 2R and 3R zones. Same kind of thing in terms of the minimum furniture requirements in those zones, it's either 40 or 50 feet if you're talking about row house or townhouse development or small multifamily development, you don't need to have necessarily a lot size per unit that that's that big, you know? Again, particularly for townhomes. And then I think there's the opportunity potentially to expand some of the uses that you allow, particularly in your medium-density zone, your 2R zone, to include some things that we would think of as more kind of medium-density types of housing, duplexes, triplexes, cottage cluster housing, that can actually fit pretty well within a single-family neighborhood, that's primarily a single-family neighborhood, especially if you have some standards in terms of the size and scale of that housing that help them be, that type of housing be more compatible with just individual homes. So we've got some suggestions in the document about potentially expanding some of the allowed housing types, particularly again in the 2R zone, and a little bit, yeah, primarily in the 2R zone. And then also cottage cluster housing, I think I might, I don't remember if we talked about this before, people know what I'm talking about when I say that, like small, individual, detached homes on a lot that surrounds a common open space usually, often parking will be kind of shared. It's again, kind of a form of housing that can fit pretty well within almost any kind of neighborhood, and you don't have specific requirements for that now. I think your kind of plan development standards might essentially allow for that, but it might be helpful to think about adopting some specific standards for that housing type and allowing it in the R2 and the R3 zones. So that's the other recommendations here. And again, if you are going to allow, sort of expand some of the types of housing you allow in those zones, think about some standards that don't lead to really large structures that don't fit into those neighborhoods. So there's some, we can, and on all these things, if you want kind of more information, we can provide it. We've got examples of zoning codes in other communities that would give you some, some further detail and ideas on some of these things. So that's kind of a lot on this slide, but that's kind of the range of things that we identified in just looking at your development code. All right. Next one. The next one is incentives. So we've got several strategies that we described in this report that are kind of about, if there are certain types of housing you need or want, and this is to some degree where that issue of housing for people with lower or moderate incomes comes in, people who maybe work in this community but are having a hard time finding a place they can afford, or if you think, hey, it's really important to have more accessory dwelling units in the city, any specific type of housing that you're looking to provide, to incent or encourage, there's different ways you can do that. So, one, there's some things you can do with your development code, you can, and this one is always guaranteed to create a lot of discussion, reduce off-street parking requirements. So you maybe, if you allow an accessory dwelling unit, and you might do this now already, you don't require an extra space, parking space off-street for that unit. And you can do that with other types of housing as well. You can provide density or high bonuses in specific zones for, again, certain types of housing that you're trying to encourage. In terms of, we listed up here, you can, you can think about reducing or deferring systems development charges for those types of housing. Deferring doesn't necessarily cost you something, you're just deferring payment until later, but it reduces the upfront cost of building housing, so it can be a thing that helps make certain kind of developments pencil out. I was talking to somebody last week in Primeville, they did this for a certain period of time on single-family detached housing, which then you like doing this on all these individual homes, which I would not recommend, because it's sort of an administrative nightmare. But if you're doing it on larger developments that again, are meeting a certain housing need, that's something to think about. Some communities, when they have updated their systems development charge methodologies, they've done it in such a way that they're tying the charge more to the impact of the house, so smaller houses essentially pay a lower fee. Accessory dwelling units pay a lower fee. So if you get to the point where you're going to update your SEC methodology, that's a thing to think about, too. And then we talked in here about expedited development review. A lot of communities, you know, they say, hey, we don't take a long time to review things, we're already kind of expediting review, and that could be the case here. There are some provisions, some statutory provisions that require a kind of shorter timeline for review for certain communities, for certain types of affordable housing developments. You guys are below the threshold for that, you're not required to do that by the state, but it's a thing you could look into, and we could provide some language if that's something you want to move forward on. And then finally, tax abatements or exemptions. Again, for those housing developments that are aimed at meeting the needs of people with lower or moderate incomes, this is a strategy that can really help, again, make those developments financially feasible. But you have to allow for that to happen. You have to, there are several state tax abatement or exemption programs, state-enabling or authorized programs, but the city has to take action to say, yes, we are going to abate or exempt these developments from these taxes. And it has an impact, you know, on city revenue, so you have to decide if you're interested in doing that. But there are cities kind of around the state that do that, and some pretty fairly small ones, Jahats, has done that pretty recently on a, it's kind of a workforce and senior mixed housing development there. So something to think about. Next one. This talks about partnerships. Again, there's a lot of these things that you're not necessarily going to do as a city, but that other organizations can do, and you can provide some support in some way. One kind of support is just having a policy in your comprehensive plan that says, we support the efforts of nonprofit organizations, or the county, or others who are trying to either develop housing for specific groups of folks, or if there's any kind of housing rehab loan program here, you know, providing some policy support for that. One of the types of groups that works on those types of projects sometimes are community land trusts. I don't know if there are any community land trusts operating in Gold Beach.
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, so there's a couple around the state. Habitat for Humanity does kind of a community land trust thing, where essentially, the idea behind a community land trust is they own the land, they sell the homes, in exchange for selling the homes at a price that's affordable to people in a certain income range, they don't allow the value of the home to increase by more than a certain amount. They write that into the essentially sales agreement, so they maintain the affordability of that house sort of permanently. So Habitat does that in some form, I don't know exactly how theirs works. Crowdground works in the Willamette Valley, and on the coast, north coast, there are another organization. So, you know, if one of these organizations is interested in working in this community, you could, you know, see what they have, what support they might be looking for. Sometimes they just want to help find a property, sometimes they're interested in some kind of funding or financial support. So again, some of these things, take money to do. And then kind of finally, I think on this one, I just note that just providing information about where buildable properties are, you know, what are your development code requirements for housing, that helps kind of any developer. So to the extent you have kind of easy-to-read stuff, so somebody doesn't have to figure it all out by reading the development code, that's going to be a helpful thing. Next one. So this one is sort of aimed more at helping people who are already in their homes, stay in their homes, tenant protection or assistance. I will sort of start off by saying particularly the things that are listed under the first big bullet, those renter relocation assistance, rental registration, rental inspections, those are kind of big lifts administratively. I don't know that I would recommend you go down the path of that, there's not a lot of cities out there doing it, Gresham, Beaverton. So we list them up here just to kind of help you think about that, but that would be probably near the bottom of the priority list just because of the administrative work that it takes. There are a couple cities out there, well, so home repair and rehab, there are some programs authorized that the state funds that essentially county housing authority in partnership with a nonprofit group, in partnership with a city, can help pursue to get money to help people basically repair their homes or rehabilitate their homes so they can stay in their homes. So that's something, if there is that opportunity here, to kind of look into. And then that's one where you're applying for money from the state, so you're not having to come up with that money yourself. And then finally, kind of reduce fees for utilities, like the city of Milwaukee has a program where they do that, if you meet certain income requirements for city utilities, they reduce the utility bill. So again, something to think about in terms of helping folks just stay in their homes if they're having a hard time doing that. And then finally... And then finally, some of these things, as I mentioned, take money. And so there are a number of different kind of funding strategies out there, there's a couple that we think, again, pretty big lifts for smaller communities, which include a housing bond, housing levy, not a lot of jurisdictions out there doing that, city Portland, the metro area. But construction excise tax is one that kind of cities of various sizes either have adopted or are looking at adopting. It's essentially a tax on the construction of new housing, it can also be applied to non-residential development, to commercial and industrial development. It's a tax of... Is it up to 1% or up to 3?
1%.
Up to 1%. So most jurisdictions are, are doing it at 1%, but some less, you can go at half a percent. So that's assessed at the time of essentially occupancy or development. And the state has some specific requirements on how you have to spend that money. Some of it has to go to what are called developer incentives, so that's things like reducing or defer, reducing SDCs. A certain amount of it has to go to actual affordable housing programs, some of it goes back to the state, and some of that money tends to come back to the local communities. It takes an ordinance to adopt, and you want to make sure that it makes sense, like it's going to generate enough money that you can at least use it to leverage some other programs, even if you don't have kind of a city adopted program. Once you've adopted it, it tends to be pretty easy to administer and collect the money, it gets typically collected by a building department, and then just goes into a fund and then you use it. So it's not super complicated administratively, but it does require some, some work to adopt. We didn't really describe too many other kind of funding strategies, because the other ones tend to be harder to adopt, more work, more complicated, but that's one to think about. We listed in the report some cities that have recently adopted one, Milwaukee, Newport, I think Lincoln City is considering one, and there's a number of other ones out there that are looking at it, but have not adopted it. So, that, I think, is that my last one? That's my last one. So happy to take any questions, comments, anything that you think, I don't know, that doesn't seem reasonable, or I really like that one, when you update the report, tell me more.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Uh, Councilor, do you have any questions? Anything? Councilor Kaufman?
On your report itself, on page, I need to get these glasses, oh, I don't remember. Page seven, the fifth bullet point down talks about affirming fair housing.
Yes.
And it only references the Federal Fair Housing Act.
Okay.
And I think that's a mistake, I think it should also include the state fair housing laws as well.
Okay, thank you.
And, I even had a suggested, at the very end of your sentence, put under both federal and state regulations.
Oh, perfect, okay.
So, which we could probably do ourselves, but I thought I'd mention it to you.
Good.
Page 25 of our packet of 20 of your report, number 10, I don't think I can make you do it, but I'm not in favor of any more landlord regulations than SB 608 just lent last year.
State's already...
I just went to a class on that, and I think the average mistake is going to cost about $6,000. So I don't see any need to, it would be expensive for the city to do that, as you mentioned.
Yeah.
And then I had a couple questions. You said you didn't think we needed to rezone?
I, we didn't sort of find a need that you needed to rezone lands from one residential designation to another. The one place where, again, we identified a potential deficit was not enough land in your R1 zone, or your 1R zone, kind of combination of 1R and R1. But part of the discussion we had was, well, your 2R also allows single-family residential uses, and when we're kind of looking at what do you need, we're generally looking at what's allowed in the zone, I mean, the minimum lot sizes are a little, are less in the R2 zone, but you can still build on bigger lots, so unless you were to establish some really kind of high minimum densities or something, we didn't necessarily see the need to do that based on the comparison of the housing need and the land supply.
I'm not certain that the city ever actually looked at the area and said, this makes more sense for, this looks more sense for maximum density. In fact, I think the 2R was actually for rural uses, because it's up 11th Street where it didn't used to have sewer and water, it's in Hunter Creek where they're just starting to get sewer and water, and I think it was more designed for people as they annexed to be more comfortable moving into the city. I don't think it was ever considered medium density in my room. So I'm wondering if we even have them in the right places, to be honest.
Okay.
What, the zoning?
Yeah, and, you know, it was like, well, the first block or two of, from 101 should be commercial, whether it's got a house or a business on it.
That, that was one of the notes that I made, that, we had talked about this before about Hunter Creek when we annexed it in 97, there's still large slots of Hunter Creek that still have county's zoning designation, we administer it because it's in the city, but it creates confusion, so we need to change that anyway, so this would be a good time to look at exactly what you were saying, Councilor Kaufman, is that, I don't know that anyone sat down and said, okay, medium, high, low, I don't, I don't know that that conversation was ever had, so this would be the time to do that, now that we have this, where we can sit there and say, okay, you know, the lower portions of First, Second, Third, Fourth Street are, are better suited for higher densities, the areas going up Riley Creek may be low to medium, I, I think that would be the time, this is the time now to start really looking at that, saying, okay, what, what kind of densities do we want to see in this area?
Yeah, and we could certainly add some discussion to the report, I think we want to have a little more conversation with you to know how specific we want to be, and...
I think that might be just a discussion that when we get ready to do the adoption, that, that, that's some work that we need to do on a local level. And what areas do we know are not going to be able to be served by sewer?
We might at least kind of raise the issue here. Okay.
Yes, since your premise was that 2R is medium, and it really isn't, so you might make that, mention that if it were medium density, which we could change the zone to be that, I don't know how the residents would feel, but...
I mean, that's kind of how like...
It normally is that way, but this is Creek County.
Yeah, okay.
We're the last Mohicans to ever accept any zoning.
Really good point.
Do you know, and this is my last question, do you know if there's any way to find out what the correct number of vacation rentals would be?
In terms of how many you should have, or how many there are?
Well, we kind of have an idea of how many there are, because we collect the tax, there's always a few outliers, but...
Right.
We are starting a conversation with the other jurisdictions in our county to possibly have a similar ordinance, because it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to limit them, but right outside, they don't.
Right.
Because then they'll just move out.
Yeah.
It seems like it'd be better if everybody kind of...
So, that's a really good question.
I mean, is there like a formula to say, like, you have this many housing units, no more than this many should be for short-term? I mean, is there such a thing?
I don't, we have never worked on some sort of rule of thumb like that or formula, so the answer is that right now, I wouldn't know.
Okay. What are trouble where you would know?
Yeah.
It's one of those places for your visitors.
It would certainly, I think, be, that might be community by community, based on, you know, what your local goals are and what you'd like to see.
And the percent does really differ, I think, by community, and the kind of community's perception of how impactful that is to other aspects of the community. At some point, when you get to a certain percentage, and I don't know necessarily what that percentage is, there was a study not too long ago about kind of impacts of short-term rental, you guys worked on one for the Portland region, yeah? Yeah, so there haven't some studies done in kind of larger places about how those things impact rent levels and housing price levels of occupied housing, you know, non-short-term rental housing. And there are cities that have adopted restrictions or limits on them, so the city of Lincoln City, for instance, they have restrictions on the percent of them that are allowed in certain parts of the city, and it kind of varies by section of the city. So those are the things kind of I know about what places have done to look at. There are some communities I'm familiar with, or I've seen some studies on this, reports in, like the, the Intermountain West in the Rockies, where they limit the number per block. There are places that have just outright said, we're not going to allow any more. Hood River is actually going to a point of getting rid of their, the ability to do that at all in the future. So it really does vary by community. I've never, like Brendan said, seen a kind of a rule of thumb threshold, I wish I could say I had, but I haven't. So I think it, it really does vary by community.
I'd add that as you look at that, I think the quantity or percentage is an important part of it, but then also think about how to regulate the actual, you know, some of the actual perhaps negative effects you're seeing. So if, if the trouble is parking, or the trouble becomes noise after, after dark, something like that, then, you know, it's, it can take a comprehensive approach to not just limiting the quantity, but then actually thinking about what are the, what are the actual issues that this is causing, and how can we address those? For instance, are there too many on a single block, or are they just in the wrong parts of town, you know, so...
And I think the other thing to just sort of think about, and we have talked to folks in other parts of the coast about this, is that's essentially, if no one, if the owner's not occupying that house, it's only being used for short-term rentals, that's essentially a commercial enterprise in often a residential zone, and that's a way to sort of think about it in terms of regulating it. It's no longer really residentially used in terms of it's a house or whatever it is, occupied as somebody who's a resident of this community, it's somebody who's using it to, for a commercial purposes. So that's a thing to think about in terms of how, how you think about regulating those kind of uses as well, I think. And again, at some point, when they become a large percentage of the housing stock, they do start to, it can affect either A, the supply of housing that then is available for long-term renters or owners, or B, the costs of those things. But until you get to a certain point, they may not be having a big effect on that, it probably depends on kind of what your vacancy rate looks like for permanently occupied units.
I have a question actually for the administrator. There you are. As it stands now, and I cannot remember, so therefore I'm asking you, those that are being used as vacation, vacation rentals and what have you, that type of thing, do the owners of those homes have to apply for a business license?
Yes. Depending on where, where the property is located, they may or may not have to get also a conditional land use permit, so they might have to get a conditional use permit. And I'll, I'll give you an example, like, most of the houses down in Sebastian Shores are vacation rentals, but that property zoning is commercial, so they don't have to get a conditional use permit, but they do have to get a business license, and they do have to collect and remit the room tax. Now, there's, I just had one today, it's in a residential zone, so they are going to have to apply for a conditional use permit, and then if that's granted, then they have to collect and remit the room tax, and then they have to get a business license.
So in those ways, you are treating them as commercial enterprises?
I was just thinking along the lines of that, that would be, we have a, a pretty general idea, don't we, of...
Yes.
How many vacation rentals do we have in town?
Yes, and then I, about every three to six months or so, I'll go on to like Airbnb or Vacation Rental by Owner, and double-check to see who's listed there, and I usually pick up one or two, in fact, last week I just sent out three letters for people that are advertising vacation rentals without a permit. Two of those are in commercial zones, so they just need to get a business license and then collect and remit the tax. The other one is in a residential zone, so that if they want to continue renting it as a vacation rental, they need to get a conditional use permit.
All right, thanks, ma'am.
So you're kind of already doing some of the things we would say, think about, don't know?
It's a little bit easier for us, because we're a smaller community, so it's a little bit easier, but like a bigger city, it would be harder, but we do try to keep an eye on it, and...
I thought that we did.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any, any further questions? Thank you all. Councilor Brennan, do you have anything?
No. Okay, well, if you see...
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Just say if you see anything else in here, you know, after this meeting, and have any additional comments, questions, just send them on to Jody, and she'll get them to us, and we will work on and update these.
Okay, I do want to thank you, it is pretty thorough as it stands right now, and obviously it's simple work, and, yes, ma'am, you may...
Sir, if, if you do find a credible source on what percentage of the, the homes within the city should be rentals, if there is a firm school of thought on that, I would be very interested in what that is.
Okay.
I know we're at 20 odd percent of our properties in town are rental.
Are short-term rentals?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
And that seems high to me, so I want to see if my thoughts are true, or if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I think at, at a minimum, I could send you some links to or other studies that you can kind of talk about percentages or numbers, and if our minds have decided that feels like too much to us, or we think that's having some kind of adverse effect, effect on the supply or...
I appreciate that. That's something that I'm wrestling with, I think some other people up here are wrestling with.
Okay.
So, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to explain this just a little bit. We are under absolutely no compulsion whatsoever to, these are open meetings, but citizens do not have automatically the right to speak at these meetings. This is something that most jurisdictions, most communities will allow, and I think it's a good idea, but we all have basically time limits associated with that. So as people come up to speak, and this is generally the time, we have two times, we have right close to the beginning of the meeting, and then we have at the end of the meeting, where citizens can have an opportunity to speak. But we limit that to three minutes. So with those little rules in, in mind, I think I do have at least two sheets, and generally speaking, if someone wants to speak, they're in the back, would be called Business from the Audience. All you do is fill out one of those, bring them up to either me or the administrator, and if it's the administrator, then she will give them to me. But with that in mind, Mary Row, Mary Row, you had, where, where's she at?
She's at...
Oh, she left?
I didn't see her.
Okay. Marcia Bernard, where's Marcia at? There you are.
Mary was your friend.
Hmm?
Mary was your friend. She wanted to be at the very beginning.
Yeah, I saw her, but, yes, ma'am?
Hi. I wish to talk about the extended conditional permit given to La Model last month, and I do feel really bad for Ms. Gazzara's illness, and I recognize that it's a very serious situation she was in. But on with my issues about it, is the time that lasts from the expiration date of the conditional use permit to contacting the city to, to extend that permit was about six months. And, excuse me. La Model was allowed what amounts to an extension, that actually gives them essentially one additional year, because the first permit was from October 2017 to October 2018, and the extension allows them to, this extension allows it to go to October 2019, so that's two years that they were allowed. And there was communication by phone... And there was communication by phone and by mail starting in September 2018, just prior to the expiration of the conditional use permit that ended in October 2018. So they paid a water penalty of three hundred, three thousand eight hundred. Ms. Gazzara states, that's what she says, but the city is not requiring any penalty for the conditional use permit expiring, but they were, you know, charged a penalty about the water and sewer situation. As to when a permit expires, I have this from Jody that wrote this April 8th, 2019. Generally, in land use actions, when a permit expires, the process must start again, meaning new application and hearing for a new permit. They asked if there were any other options. As planning director, I feel it legally, no, there are no other options. Expiration of a permit is akin to a death. Once the threshold has been crossed, no amount of CPR is going to revive a victim that has expired. Their CUP expired without substantial construction, therefore they have no valid permit. So, I'm sorry, I just got some of this information today at 11:30. So, I believe that the surrounding property owners should have the right to be heard on this matter, and they weren't allowed to. Therefore, I wish to appeal the decision to extend the conditional use permit, and I'd like to be told what I need to do to appeal that decision.
I don't know, because last month was a, we've never had a situation like that, so if, I would say that since we've never had a situation like that and we now have a neighboring property owner that wishes to appeal that decision, then I think because we allowed LaMotta the opportunity to talk to you, then I think you should probably allow the appellant's to talk to you as well. But that would have to, it wouldn't be at this meeting, it would be at the next meeting. And then I would provide you, just like I did last time with the staff report, and then you would have a public hearing, just like we had at the last meeting.
Okay, counsel, where are you at?
May I suggest that you have legal counsel review where we are so far, and that way it helps them know where they stand and where we stand and-
Yes.
And I think one of the things that you didn't know on the April 8th date was that they did have a building permit. I don't think you knew that when you wrote that letter.
I'll, I'll check back on what, I didn't hear what you said, Pam.
What I said was, I don't, if my memory serves me, the administrator did not know that they had a building permit in September, when she wrote that memo. So that was new information, I believe, that night. Because she had known that there was a building permit in September, she would not even get it expired, but we can put that together and can we send that to them?
Yes. So, so what we'll do, Ms. Bernard, is for the June meeting, and I will send you something in the mail, so they'll have it in writing, there'll be, I don't want to say it's an appeal hearing, because it's, this whole thing has been odd, but your opportunity to appeal the decision on the extension to the city council will be at the next meeting.
Will other property owners in the vicinity be notified?
You made that request, so yes, I'll notify the original people that had been, the original property owners that had been notified.
Okay.
That there will be an appeal hearing and an opportunity for them to come to talk to the council.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, quite frankly-
Yeah, just a second.
And please. This notifying the other property owners would be made so much easier if we had our, we had a press here.
Well, but because it's, it's a quasi, and because it's, it's a weird, this whole action's been weird, but because it's an appeal, I'm required to pull the property owners and send them a notice by mail, that's state law, so.
All right.
Yeah.
Yes, counsel?
You can double check with legal counsel, but you might want to consider a reconsideration instead of an appeal.
That's, yeah.
Okay, any further business from the audience? Now we move ahead. Review, possible revision to sign code to allow process for digital display signs. And I know that we have people that are interested in that here. So, at any rate- Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so at, at the last meeting, the, the council had directed me to contact legal counsel and find out what options were available, and I had mentioned that we had, we had done in the past an exception on another ordinance to, related to the planning commission. So I talked to legal counsel about that, and they felt that maybe that wasn't the best way to go about it, but it would be basically the same process, but just to insert in the current sign code, because we didn't want to revisit the entire sign code at this time, a process by which the council could review applications for display signs and then come up with a set of basic standards that they would have to comply with, and then there would be a public hearing, and then the council would decide whether to issue a permit or not. So the, the draft, and again, this is just a draft for you to consider, is a combination of information that was put together by legal counsel and then-
Not to interrupt here on that, real quickly, this is a public hearing.
Oh, yes, it is.
And I forgot, this is my fault, I forgot to announce it as such, it is a public hearing, which means that the public has an opportunity to respond to anything that they would like concerning this topic. And I have to note, by the time when we go into it, so I'm going to go back a little bit and say it's about seven, what, 7:20?
Okay.
Does that sound good? Okay, so we are in a public hearing right now. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Yep, so they, they provided a draft amendment to the code, and there was a couple of things in there that they had, that they hadn't included, so I included them. One of them was, we needed to have a new definition if we were going to have that, so I included that. And then also I had asked them to put together some, as Public Works Superintendent Will Newdahl says, guardrails, so I put some suggested guardrails. Those are suggestions for you to consider, but please note that this is, this will be your ordinance, so these are just suggestions.
All right.
And then the proponents of the request are also in the audience here.
Right. Therefore, I'm going to go ahead and let counsel, if they have anything to say first, and then if you guys have anything whatsoever, just come on the floor and state name, address for the record, and we'll go from there. Counsel, do you have anything on this at all? Yes, sir?
I had some questions on the, in the proposal where it describes the digital display, you know, A through I. Some of the terms, I'm not sure, what is, I, I see that there's some information on the brightness, but as far as the display goes, what does, what describes, what can be, what, what this display would do? Are there, you know, what are these terms as far as what the image is? You know, in other words, like, do they flash, or, I mean, would they be allowed to flash? Or where it says images may not change more than once every 10 seconds, does that, does that mean that it can't blink? I mean, you know, I'm-
That's, that's the proposal, is that the image has to be static for at least 10 seconds and then it can fade into another one. Some, the state is very specific on, you know, can't have flashing lights, it can't have strobes, it can't have that. I didn't actually include that in there because most of our properties are allowing 101s, so they're going to have to comply, they're going to have to get a sign permit from the state as well, but we could include those if you want those, like no strobes. But yes, the image would be, it couldn't be like fireworks, whatever, it has to be a static image for at least 10 seconds. And again, that's just, I just looked at other sign codes and just picked that number, but you can make it whatever you want it to be.
And I noticed there was one along the coast that was like fifteen seconds, I guess.
Yes.
Okay. I guess that was my main concern, was what, what static meant or what the, you know, what the images were allowed to do.
You're through, counsel?
Yeah.
Okay, counsel Campbell?
Number I, it says that digital dynamic display sign operation and illumination is prohibited between the hours of 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM. I'm reading that to mean the sign gets turned off at 9:00 PM and turned back on at 6:00 AM, is that correct?
Correct, and I, and I threw that in there because Counselor Kaufman had, had some concerns about the, the intensity of lights at night, and then we had talked about how the one in Port Orford, I believe, got shut off at night, and it does. So, so I just, again, I just threw that out there for, to try to address the concerns about night brightness.
I wasn't at the last council meeting, so-
Oh, that, oh, that's right.
I missed a lot of this discussion, so I'm just trying to catch up.
So I tried to, the concerns that, that everybody expressed, I tried to kind of put those in as the, the basic conditions of a sign.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any further questions?
I'd like to reserve and to laugh in public comments.
All right. All right, ladies, would anybody like to speak on this? Yes?
So just because you weren't here the last month, I'll kind of vaguely recap. Now, what started the conversation was that Tiffany Somer has thrown a credit being-
Name and address, please.
The branch here in town. And we are appealing to the community and the city council to try and get the digital signs up in Gold Beach that are in Port Orford and Brookings. Really, it's a community sponsored, not sponsored, pardon me, community awareness. We can promote local businesses as far as the ones that we partner with, or nonprofit community events such as Party at the Park, the Parade, the Fair, High on Health, you know, certain events that maybe are in the Brookings community that we partner with, that will in turn, hopefully, you know, that if we have something going on here, the same can be had down there, so, you know, again, just bringing communities together and getting some awareness to what Gold Beach has to offer. Any questions for me on what we're after at this point?
I don't see any, but I do thank you for being here and coming on up.
I did have one question too, I did see in here something along the lines of an appropriate fee. Do you guys have at this time any idea of what appropriate fee would have been?
Wouldn't that be somewhere along the lines of what we're charging others now?
That would be, I mean, currently we charge, it's based on the square footage of the sign, and if it's under certain square footage, it's a base fee of $50. So I wasn't sure, because it's, we're going to require a council hearing if you wanted it to be more, that's up to you guys. If you want it to just be the current fee schedule, that's fine too.
Counsel Brenner?
They already have the sign up, so would we charge them an additional fee?
That's, that's where I threw that out there to you, that it's up to you guys what you want to charge.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Counsel Kaufman, would you like to say anything at this time?
Well, I do, I want to remind the mayor that people may have a disclosure, they may have a conflict of interest before they speak, they may want to mention that they're a member of the credit union.
Oh.
I believe our attorney suggested that they do that, even though they can still vote.
Yeah.
I'm not a member of the credit union at this time. And I'm concerned about the poll portion of this, I don't even believe there is just not a poll, I think it's more of a monument.
The, the definition in the sign code includes that type of, that, because I had to read that for poll for us, because I thought, it's not a poll, but I should have put in there what the definition, the sign code of poll is, and that is that type of structure.
Also, if the council would like to move forward with this, I think we should limit them to Highway 101, so they're not in the commercial residential areas, maybe also in the Port District, because there's really no residential in the Port District. And I'm a little concerned that this is going on so fast when there's been a long-term community against it, and I'm also concerned that once one's allowed, there'll be tons of them. And we have people here that are against the marijuana shop, and you know they're going to have one, and it's going to have leaves going across it, and it, what, and you cannot control content, you can only control whether or not they have one.
But this process would be that they have to come to you and there has to be a public hearing, so you have the ability to say, "No, you can't have a sign."
Yeah, right.
Well, you do.
You have a for one, you have a for all.
That's up to the council, that's why I said that it would be a public hearing and then, then people could voice their concerns. But it wouldn't be, like right now, if somebody comes in at the counter with a sign permit, as long as it meets the standards, we just issue it over the counter. But this would be not a staff decision, this would be, when we received an application, it would be scheduled for the next council meeting and it would be a public hearing.
All right, are you anything further, counsel?
Yes.
All right. Yes, sir?
I have a question on what about brightness? Who, who is going to determine if the sign is too bright or not?
Well, and that's why I put in there the, the time, the time, the limitation on time, because it seemed to be the concern was at night, so if the sign has to be off during night, 10 hours, my thought was that would resolve the, the illumination at night. And then there's also a thing in there about, on number G, the display sign should be equipped with a light sensor that automatically adjusts the intensity of the sign according to the amount of ambient light, so that way if it were, you know, like a dark rainy day, it's not nine o'clock yet, it would change the-
The luminance.
The, yeah, the, the intensity of the sign. But the, the concern was how bright it was at night, so if the signs have to be off at night, that should alleviate the concern about how bright it is. And if those hours are not, you know, the hours can be whatever you want, again, this is, this is just spaghetti that was thrown at the wall, so you guys, this is your ordinance, you decide what you do and don't want.
Okay. Anything further on this? From our bids, the suggestions and what have you, I guess now, yeah, I'm kind of a little confused right now too. Are we going to go ahead and then, and do the councils wish, what have you, that we take this into June and see anything? We do have a draft before us. What would you guys like to do?
I prepared in the, the ordinance section, if you wanted to adopt it-
Tonight?
Tonight, you have that ability to either have a first and or second reading tonight.
Right.
If you want to think about it, discuss it, chew on it a little bit more, wait until next month, I can put it on next month's agenda. I just wanted to give you the opportunity to be able to vote on it tonight, if that is what you wanted.
Yes, and I thank you for that. We do have that, that option right now. Counsel, Counsel Brennan, what would you like to do on this?
I'd like to put a little more thought into it.
All right. Counsel Begone?
I, I like the way it's written.
Okay. Counsel Campbell?
I'm ready to proceed.
You're ready to proceed?
Yes, sir.
All right. Counsel Kaufman?
I'd like to suggest some amendments if we're ready to move forward.
I'm sorry, I can't-
I'd like to suggest some amendments if we're ready to move forward. Amendments?
Oh, amendments.
I emailed everybody ahead, I think it's in, in front of you, Jody cleared it with you, this research is in front.
Yeah.
On page eight, there's recommended legislative language, and I think the most important part is the foot candles, number B, because that would give, B and C actually, that would give the people that have the sign and they order the sign, the specifications it's got to go to.
What page are you referring to, ma'am?
Page eight.
Thank you.
Says recommended legislative language at the top.
Got it.
And I think of these four, B and C are probably the most important, unless somebody thinks D is also. D is also...
Well, let's cut to the quick. We've got two that are willing to stop it to go tonight, and we have two that are not. So let's, uh...
Well, I think Counselor Kaufman, she said she, if we're gonna proceed, that she had a couple of amendments.
Okay, so then short, I'm sorry, if those amendments were admitted tonight, then you were prepared to make a vote?
To continue, yeah, to continue on. So my amendment would be, usually a motion. I make a motion that we, um, add to the ordinance, section one, um, B, C, and D from this recommended legislative la, research, language from ISA research. Is that enough detail?
Okay. So B is the illumination, C is the dimming, and D is definition. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
A motion has been made, or is there a second to it?
Second.
Motion been made, seconded by Counselor Brenner. Discussion. Question?
Aye.
Counselor Begone?
I'm trying to finish reading it, sorry. Uh, aye.
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 Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, and then just for clarification, um, did, uh, did we, did you want to add limitation on the signs, uh, only on 101 and the port area, or do you want to leave that as something to be just considered if somebody comes in with an application?
I'd like, considered if somebody comes in with an application.
Yeah, case by case.
Okay.
Okay, everybody?
That's fine.
Yes, sir.
Is the 10-second, uh, timeframe, is that what, I mean, do we wanna stick with that or is there any, any other input?
That would be, um, item number E.
That's when the sign changes, right?
Correct. The image or message on the digital display may not change more often than once every 10 seconds.
And actually, kind of the safety thing, it's not a bad idea, really, 10 seconds. I suppose it could be a little bit quicker than that, but...
Were you thinking, I think he was thinking 15, but I...
Well, I just, like I said, I was just looking at one of the cities that had 15. I just wondered where the 10 reference came from, if it was just arbitrary or if it was... Could I ask?
Yes, sir. You may.
You know, what, do you know the frequency of your signs now in the other cities?
Unfortunately, I don't know that.
Okay.
I have, I have a quick recording. I can watch really, really quick and try to count through it, if that's all right. Give you whatever you need.
Doesn't Bedford have a 15-second rule? Pardon? I think Bedford has one of 15-second. So it depends on where it is.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm gonna watch it and see.
10's quite a long time.
Yeah, it is. It's a long time.
When you're driving 30, it's 10.
Did, did, uh, did she say that she had?
They, they're gonna watch the recording and count it.
Oh, okay.
So, please hold.
I see that Waldorf is 15 seconds. But it really does vary. Seaside's at 1.5 seconds. Brookings has no limits. Well, no, no, every two seconds for Brookings.
That's it? Yes.
About three to five seconds per, per image, um, but there's only, you know, you're looking at somewhere between three to five words as well.
Sure. How many seconds, I'm sorry?
About three to five seconds.
Three to five seconds.
I'm just worried about traffic. I'm distracted.
Yeah.
It is, again, maybe a minimal wording, three to five words. They're typically larger print, so it's not like somebody's trying to squint and read a, a rear board as you're passing by. It's auto loans or party in the park, you know, something large with a date on it. It's not, at least in our case.
Okay. Thank you for doing that. Anybody have anything else? We, we, uh, had a vote, we passed it, so, um...
Well, to add those three things.
Right, right, with the amendments.
Well, to, just to add those three things, we haven't voted on the ordinance itself. Correct? It was, you just wanted to add the...
Just the amendments.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
And we're still in the public hearing, right?
Correct.
Yes, we are. We can't take a vote in that anyway. Uh, which I forgot again, too.
Well, that part's okay to add for consideration.
Right, right, that is. But actually, to turn into an ordinance, then, oh man. Anyway!
I think 10 seconds is kind of a long time, but that's just my opinion.
Short question, I mean, that, how about the gas stations? The gas stations are programmable signs and they flash cash, credit, cash, credit. So technically, they are digital and they do serve gas after hours, so that might be a thought to think about.
They're not supposed to flash.
They do, they go cash, credit, cash, credit. They, they switch when you go online. And then if they're illuminated at night and they sell gas at night, that's something to think about that, you know, just so you, cause that might come up. Somebody might say, well, hey, you know, we, we can serve gas over, you know, during the morning hours and you know who's gonna know how much your gas is and...
Okay, well, I'll have to get ahold of the gas stations, cause they're not supposed to flash. It's supposed to be just, they, they just took the place of the, the square numbers.
Right.
And that's the only reason why they're allowed. But if they're flash, I didn't realize they flashed.
Yes, but that's why I'm just saying, just in case for your thought to consider that, you know, I'm gonna say one way or the other, is it's programmable, it's lit, and they do serve after hours, so it might wanna consider that.
Thank you all. All right, if there, if there's nothing further, then, uh, we're gonna go out of the, uh, public hearing at, uh, 7:45.
Okay, now, do you wanna jump to the ordinance section? So, oh, sorry.
I was thinking about that.
Counselor Kaufman?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I think this is really important. It looks like that email was just sent to me, Jody. I think you oughta print that out so that people can read this.
What's that?
The disclosure.
That had to do with if you were going to provide an exception. It's, it's not, it doesn't count toward, that was the other reason why they wanted to do it this way. Because you would be, um, when they come in for their permit, that's when you would say it.
Okay.
But we had talked about a different process before. That's what that related to.
I would personally not take the risk, so... All you have to do is declare a conflict and it's over. If you don't declare conflict, somebody can file an ethics complaint. That's a pretty big pain in the butt.
Okay.
Ask Commissioner Pash.
Okay, but this ordinance is not specific for the credit union. The exception that we talked about was specific to the credit union. Counselor Kaufman, at the last meeting, asked me to ask legal counsel whether this, that, whether the exception that I had talked about last time could be perceived as an ethics violation.
Oh, cause if you're a member.
Yes, yes. And so, um, the attorney responded that it could be a potential conflict of interest, but the only, the only thing that you have to do is just disclose and say, I'm a member of the credit union, I'm, I'm not, I'm disclosing that.
You're not getting financial gain or anything out of that.
Correct.
So, uh, potential or direct...
But if you feel the need, like I said, that had to do with the exception, but this is where we're changing the sign code, so it applies to everyone. The exception would've been just for the, the credit union. So it would, if you could appear that you were making a decision just to benefit the credit union. But that was why the attorney said it would be better if you made a provision in your code to allow for everyone to apply for it, then it's not just for the credit union. But if you feel the need, you can disclose on the record right now if you are a member of the credit union. But this does not relate specifically to that discussion that we had last month.
Okay. Then let's go ahead to the ordinance resolutions. And you can go ahead and cross out B on that. And this is possible reading of ordinance 669, sign code revision. So...
Okay, and this is a little bit confusing, and, and so I just wanna go over real quickly that if you want to adopt it in one meeting, um, there's, there's a couple of things that have to happen. If you wanna just do it the normal way where we do one reading this meeting and one reading next month, I don't need to go through all that. So if you want to adopt it in one meeting, yes or no? Okay, so then disregard the, the first motion about if you wanna do it in one meeting. So...
Well, wait a second. I only saw one head shaking. There, uh, how does everybody do it?
It has to be unanimous. So if one person doesn't wanna do it, it's not gonna matter.
Okay, let's go then.
So, um, so then the other one, there's the, um, the motion about, you know, that you wanna adopt it by reading by title only. And when you read, when you say that motion, say as amended, because we made some changes to it.
Okay. All right, with, with that being recognized, yes, Counselor Campbell?
I think the motion that the council adopt ordinance number 669 and ordinance amending ordinance 643, which adopted a revision of revised Gold Beach Business Code.
As amended.
First reading to be by title only, as amended.
Second motion.
Counselor Begone, seconded. Discussion. Question?
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so what this means, ladies, is the second, in, in June is the second reading of it, and then it goes into effect 30 days after that. Okay, so it's still, there's still some time, but, okay?
And if you wanted to leave now, feel free.
Sir?
Okay. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Well, it's fresh. Can you next month bring forward our fee structure so we can handle that at the same time?
Okay, yes.
All right. Now, we have a request for on-premise, uh, beer, wine, sales, liquor license. And this is, uh, Wild Oaks Foods.
Okay, the, um, I, I'm not really sure why, um, OLCC makes us go through this, because we really don't have the ability, as I know. Um, but this is for a new, um, liquor license, and I also put in there a copy of their application is attached, and it was not attached. I'm sorry. Um, I, I realized that after I sent it out, but I, I have to redraft all the information anyway. So basically, it's the new barbecue joint. There's never been a liquor license at that location, so that's why they have to come to the council to ask, um, whether may I, before they can go to OLCC.
Yes, sir.
I am, I'm gonna declare a potential conflict.
I understand, thank you, sir.
Do we, do we have to make a motion to approve something?
Yes.
Yeah, um, just that you recommend to the OLCC that, that either they grant or deny their request for a limited on-premise.
I make a motion that OLCC grant, um, the permit for them to serve wine and beer at the Wild Oaks.
I second.
Motion been made, it has been seconded. Any discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Motion passed unanimously. All right. And now we have a request for an advanced health for a letter of support. And we do have something going there about that.
Uh, yes, they requested, um, and you can, I'm not gonna regurgitate all that, but, uh, basically, they're applying for, um, CCO 2.0, we must include letters of support from our key community stakeholders. And basically, it's a coordinated care organization to administer the Oregon Health Plan in our area. And they have requested a letter of support from the, the council.
Now, that was a little bit confusing to me in Australia, I mean, not terribly, but that's all they're requesting. I saw other things in there, that made it almost sound as if we had to, uh, you know, have a member on their board or that we had to, uh, you know, be associated with them more than just providing a letter. Is that, did I read that wrong?
Well, what it was is, it says if you're receiving this email, you've been identified as a key stakeholder, and, um...
As a stakeholder, you oughta be involved in something, I would think.
I think it's just because we're, we're the city and county.
That's all there is to it. Yes, sir.
My question is, what is this? I, I have no idea what it, what this is or what they're, what they do. Um, I, I kept looking for a definition, and I didn't see it.
I, and...
Can you?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead, Counsel.
So Oregon Health Plan gives their business to coordinated care organizations. There are two that represent Curry County. One is Advanced Health, it used to be Western Advanced Health. The other is All Care. All Care gave us a grant to do the ADU advertising. So, and Advanced Health is paying mostly for the building where Oak is at, and they're working with the community resources, one-stop shop for all homeless and people that need help, getting to the next level of whatever service they need. So I, and I believe that there, I talked to one of the people on, on one of the boards, and they said that there's still plenty of room for both in this area, so it's not like if you recommend one, you're not recommending the other. So we could do a letter for both of them.
Okay, thank you.
Do you need a motion, Jody?
Um, just, or just direction. They, they had a, um, a sample letter, which I usually, you know, I take portions of what they send me and then I write our own letter, cause I think it's...
This isn't political, so you can write it.
Um, well, it could be political, cause it's, it's, you know, healthcare, but I just need direction from you guys. If you want me to write a letter on behalf of the city, I'd be happy to do that. I just didn't feel comfortable when I got the email.
I'll make a motion that we prove the administrator write a letter.
Motion been made. Is there a second to that?
Second.
So say otherwise, you get to write it.
Motion been made, it has been seconded. Uh, discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you.
And now, I'll send you guys a copy of the letter.
All right. It is closing in on 8 o'clock. This is a good a time at any. Stand up and stretch your legs a little bit. Let's take 10 minutes. We're gonna go and, uh...
Our nuisance code, as far as grass height, cause it, it looks like it's over 12 inches. Um, but it's, it's still, in, in my opinion, not, it does, it's not very safe. So, so what do you wanna do?
Counselor? I personally, I'd like to see him take it down, but, uh, go ahead, Counselor Begone.
Uh, you had spoke with him, right, Jody? And he was talking about taking it down.
When I spoke to him on, I wanna say it was March 7. Yeah, March 7. Um, he said that he planned to remove the structure and replace it with a manufactured home, cause he had spoken to DEQ. And so, I have not spoken to him since then, and they have boarded up the holes, because there were, like, critters and stuff getting in there. But I, I think the structure really, really does need to be taken down. I don't, I don't think it can be made safe.
Counselor?
I'll make a motion that he has to have a demolition permit within 30 days and a replacement home permit within six months. If he wants, I'm different, he can request it.
Sounds reasonable. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Counselor Brenner, seconds. Discussion. Question?
Aye.
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 Announce.[1791.12]
Okay, Counselor, you seconded that, right?
Right.
Was that clear enough?
Yes. Demo permit within 30 days, replacement structure permit within six months, or he needs to come in and request something else.
He may need a little more time, so he doesn't lose his set. That's why I'm concerned.
All right. A request by Counselor Kaufman to discuss input from the persolution organization. So take it away, Counselor.
So I got a call from Sal Peretta, who's on this group, and what they're trying to do, these kind of a bunch of people that are, you would never expect on the same committee. The state is trying to help the schools dig out of the purse problem. They want to leave everybody else out. And all of us are hurting from the purse problem. So what they want from us is to say, "We don't want the state to just bail out the schools. We all want a fair solution to the purse problem." So he has, they have a website up. I'm not suggesting you join it or anything, but maybe read up on the information, and if you want, somebody to come talk to us about it, and what their ideas are, we can, we can have them come on the phone, or come down.
All right, thank you, ma'am. That purse, whole purse thing is such a can of worms.
It is.
I mean, I don't know how that's ever going to be resolved, but, but thank you for that information.
They're going to write checks. That's how it's going to be resolved.
With what?
Somebody's going to have to write a check.
Yeah. And I don't know that, I've got it, but it's slowly figured out right now. All right. Okay, thank you for that. City Administrator, your report, please.
Okay, just real quickly, and you have a copy of it in front of you there. Just quick updates since last month. For Public Works, Public Works has been pretty busy. We've had several things they've been working on. At the water intake, we were having issues with pump number two, and this is the raw water pump from the intake, pumping to town, but pumping from the source to the treatment plant. There's, and don't ask me to explain what this is. This is just what Public Works Superintendent Newdall gave me. So if you want to know more, you're going to have to ask him. The variable frequency drive went out on the pump, and so they had to replace it with a soft start. And we could have replaced it with another one of the variable frequency drives, but it would have been quite a bit more money. And he felt like if we got the soft start pump, if we got the soft start electronics in place, that could limp us by until we get through our loan process with the state to do upgrades at the water intake. Because that was one of the things identified in the plan to be fixed. So basically, this is kind of a temporary fix, and hopefully we can get the permanent one. And one thing I did not put in here that I just thought of, we did just hear from IFA, and we have been invited to apply for a loan with them. Because we had to do the, first, the letter of interest, and then it gets reviewed, and if it meets their criteria, then they invite us to apply. And so we have got that invitation as of last week. And it will be, we won't be able to make it for the June funding thing, because she said that had to be together like a month ahead of time. But we hope to be on the August, they get together to look at the funding packages. So hopefully, we'll be there for the August one. So they, also at the water treatment plant, Will has been having to replace a lot of small valves, and they're just one out due to age. Again, those are things that are identified in the plan, that we hope to make those updates. There's two pretty good-sized water leaks that they worked on. One was by the courthouse, and one was a hydrant on the south end of town by the condos. And they completed PLC programming for the Third Street Booster Pump Station. And the PLC has to do with, it's like electronics, so that the pump, the pump does it electronically, but it's very specialized programming. And we've been wanting to do that for some time, but the programmer had to come from Portland, so it's been a while. So we finally got that done. The police stats are attached, and one of the things that we had talked about at the budget hearing, when one of our police officers was going to be leaving, we had budgeted for the current staffing levels, and that was approved by you at the budget hearing. But you wanted me to let you know if one of our officers was going to be leaving, and one of our officers is going to be leaving in a couple of months. So is it okay if we advertise for that soon-to-be vacant position?
Sure. I don't think we can afford it long-term, so I don't want to give somebody a job. We're going to have to lay off in a year or two. So...
Your reasoning, please.
I, huh?
Your reasoning.
My reasoning is that our police staff is going up in cost, and our taxes are not going up. And so, we're at the point where it's almost tipping. We've done a great job of giving raises and being supportive of the department, and they've done a great job. But now are we, wages are above our income. Pay all of our taxes, all of our property taxes, all of our bed tax that we get for the general fund, and more, just to pay for that.
The department and general fund, generally speaking, for most places, is a good 60% to 70%, as it stands. So I know what you're talking about.
So my suggestion is to have the chief maybe talk with us about other alternatives.
So that would drop us down to a five-man force, I believe. Because we are currently funded at six, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
I think if we can afford the officer for a couple of years, we should hire him to bolster our staff. No offense, I just feel differently.
I agree.
All right.
I don't know. So, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Could I encourage us just to have that conversation with the chief, and we can make a decision from there?
Okay, now, when you say have that decision, do you, I mean, have that conversation, do you want me to have him talk to you in a council setting, or in a different type of setting?
He may want to talk to you and have you talk to us. I don't know that. You can...
Well, I'd like to talk to him personally concerning that. I think that would be a good idea, if the council met with him personally. And so that if there are any questions whatsoever that anyone would have, that they could express them at that time, and not leave the burden totally up to you to go ahead and then ask everything, in short, that you think that we might ask, you know?
Okay.
If you see what I'm saying. I don't know. Counselor Brennan, what do you think?
I, I mean, I think we should, we should staff it myself.
Just go ahead and staff. I, personally, I would like to say is just go ahead and staff here for the next couple. And I do not know, and I understand only too well, with Counselor Kaufman, it's saying, "I don't like the idea of staffing," and then only to have someone end up saying, "Okay, here's your paycheck. Look, we can't, we can't afford it." You know, I understand that only too well, and it's a good point. But on the other hand, I am concerned about the safety of the citizens here. Six-man force, we are still spread pretty doggone thin with six people. And to drop us down to five...
We accept lavalves here, don't we?
And we try to get lavalves.
Yeah.
Everybody tries to get lavalves.
Yeah. That way, we don't have to send them to the academy, because that, they're at the academy, and then it's like a year before there really are, like, a full-on police officers. So we try to get lavalves. Okay, so tell you what, we're supposed to be adopting the budget at the next council meeting, which the Budget Committee approved the current staffing levels at the budget meeting. So let's try to have, and I would suggest that we have Sergeant Miller be part of the discussion as well.
Yeah, agreed.
So I will talk to him, and then we'll, we'll talk to the council about what, okay? And we'll try to do that before the next council meeting, because the budget's going to be on the next council meeting for adoption.
Right, my answer.
If you don't mind, if you have the time, and you're super busy this time of year, maybe a graph from like 2010, when I think the council made the decision to do this, what the expenses have gone up, and what our incomes have gone up. Okay? Because graphics sometimes, charts, make a difference. And it might help the community realize that we're not lying. Okay?
Counselor, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, if we did approve it with six people, so if he's, if somebody's leaving, I'm fine with replacing them. Not that we're adding an additional layer.
No, no, just replacing one that's leaving, yeah. And that has been approved in the...
That was what was adopted. The current staffing level was what was adopted, was, which what was approved. The budget hasn't been adopted until June, but that was what was approved by the Budget Committee, which consists of you and the lay members.
All right.
Okay. Okay, so, okay, so Chief Krieger, this for fire. They, the crew, seven crew members completed emergency medical responder training this month, and this will allow them to help Cal-War more effectively. This isn't like paramedic training or whatever, but it's just, it's a, it's a bottom tier of EMT, basically. Because of the new rescue rig, as I said, Chief Krieger is on his way to Portland right now, to the Northwest Fire and Rescue Expo. They asked him to show off the new vehicle. So that's where that's going to be. This coming weekend, after he gets done there, he's coming right back, the department is hosting a regional JAWS of life training, and I put the information in there about that. Chief Krieger put that together with the manufacturer, and they're having the guy come down to show how to use the equipment, I guess. But that's for regional, it's not just us, it's for other fire departments as well. Visitor Center, Debbie's monthly report is in there, and as she says in her report, the weather and Mother Nature have hampered tourism this year. You'll see that the numbers are down. Unfortunately, we can't control the weather or the natural disasters. The slide south of us did affect glass float season pretty dramatically this year. You'll see the change in the numbers. And I think it is still continuing to affect us some, because the road is fixed, is fixed where you can get through, but there's still delays. So hopefully, by summertime, I know ODOT is working feverishly to try to get it fixed by summer.
It's, yesterday it was two lanes, one lane in each direction, no faders.
Okay, when I went through there on Monday, they had a portion of it was two lanes, but not all of it. So hopefully, that will...
Yeah, one lane north and south, no faders.
Okay.
Oh, is that what it is now? Good. Yeah, last time I was there, the same thing with the administrator.
Yeah, so it's open now, there's no...
Okay, so hopefully that...
Just to reduce speed, but yeah.
Right. So hopefully, that will help, because our, most of our visitors come from the valley, so they obviously have to come that way. Stats are attached. On up note for tourism, the regional tourism cooperative that I'm, that I'm part of, we got an award from the state during the governor's conference on tourism this year. So I have that meeting in the office.
Congratulations.
Seriously, that's a big deal.
It was a big deal. I was pretty, I was pretty happy about it.
How many years have you been doing the world tourism, do you?
Since 2012. So that was kind of a nice, you know, and it's part of, it's a team effort. It wasn't just me, but it was a part of the team, and we were acknowledged by the governor, and that was pretty cool. And then, front office, just trying to catch up after budget, because that kind of brings everything to a screeching halt. Been dealing with some HR and legal issues that have taken up a lot of my time, that is not anything to do with anything city-related, but it takes up a lot of time. Two meetings that I'll be going to this week, the regional meeting that we talked about, and then CCD is a economic development, a regional economic development board. I'll be going to that meeting. The LOC Small Cities meeting is Wednesday in Kokil. I'm actually going to be in Kuzbey. Mr. Mayor is going to the one in Kokil. Information is there. If you want to go, just let me know, and we'll get you registered. It's free. And then that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Counselor Brennan?
I have nothing.
All right. Counselor Brown?
I don't have anything.
Counselor Campbell?
I was trying to think if there was anything fun and exciting to report from our local public safety coordinated council meeting this month. And nothing's dropping out, and we're so now.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Oh, the only thing on that is, there were no police officers there. No one from the Sheriff's Department was present, and nobody from the cities were present. The state police wasn't there.
Really?
It was a very odd meeting, in that we didn't have the police presence. We had all the support staff there, which was disappointing. So...
All right, thank you. Yeah, I do find that a little bit strange, too. The one or two that I've been to, it was always law enforcement. Fact is, it was representatives from each one of the agencies, just about. All right, thank you, ma'am. Counselor Kaufman?
Quite a few things. We were supposed to have an urban renewal meeting today beforehand with our attorney, and we forgot about it, so it didn't happen.
Yes, yeah.
Do you want to do that before the next council meeting, or do you want to meet like the Monday before? What would be easier? Or do you want to postpone it till July?
This was for the legal opinion about the executive session that we had a couple months ago about...
No, we were given permission to go ahead. Actually, re-rea, what was that?
No, no.
Were we talking about that one?
Absolutely not, no.
What are we talking about that?
I'll talk about it after the meeting.
It's a potential property acquisition that we are not allowed to talk about.
So, so do we want to have a meeting before the next council meeting? It shouldn't take very long.
Yes. And I think we're going to have the attorney follow up with us on that?
Yes. And she'll be on the phone with us, and I will not forget next time. I'm sorry. It's just this, this month has had some...
Is there anything else on urban renewal we should talk about and have a regular meeting, or is this the only issue right now?
I think that's the only issue right now, unless you have any...
And you did write, send that letter for the districts?
Yes.
About if anybody wanted to volunteer?
And they were supposed to, I put in their...
Anybody volunteer?
Well, I put in your, the letter was from...
So nobody volunteered.
And they were supposed to respond to you, so...
Okay, so they answered our question. They're not interested. Okay. Moving forward. Okay, the Gold Beach Main Street meeting, they're getting really close to having the benches done. They had a holdup at the event center, and they didn't get our specs, but I think we have them now. And then, they did get the grant, which we already talked about, and they wanted to talk a little more about the power lines. And I once again encourage them to start a committee under the Kuz-Curry Electric umbrella, because if the city's telling the electric company and the phone company and everybody else what to do, it's not going to sound good. But if one of them were involved with the citizen committee, I think they'd be more. So I'm trying to get the city out of it. Are we still going to do a study?
I need to get the engineer again. He had contacted Kuz-Curry a couple of times, and...
So I, I think, and unless somebody on the council disagrees with me, I think we should let the citizens that want to do that speak with Kuz-Curry. They're going to control most of the money. We can be supportive, but I don't know that we have the staff and the money to do it.
I still would really like to have the feasibility study. And like I said, the engineer contacted Kuz-Curry, but has, has not really had very good response from them. So I'm going to ask him, I, we were actually supposed to talk the week before last, but he had a death in his family, so he'd been off work for a couple of weeks. So I need to get back with Aaron and see, okay, if the electric company isn't on board to talk, then how do we go about doing a feasibility study if we don't have information from them? Because I'm not really sure.
So maybe we say, "If you want to do a feasibility study, we'll give you a couple thousand dollars towards it, and let Kuz-Curry do it." Say to us, "Can you do it?" Let them be the lead agency. Otherwise, I feel like we're telling them what to do. We don't let people tell us what to do. They do, but... Anyway, that was my thought. You guys are welcome to disagree, but that, that's how I think that'll get done, if it gets done. We have nothing that isn't buried.
Correct.
So. And then, I went to a class on SB 608, which is the new landlord tenant law, rent control, changes of the type of notices. It's a very expensive novice landlord law. So I'm very concerned about how it's going to impact our area. For example, all-access management, specific vacations to both Michelle all day. And she used to let people rent, like the nurses and doctors that came...
and she used to let people rent, like the nurses and doctors that came, she would let them run a vacation rental in the winter, with a promise that they would move out on a certain date. She could no longer hold them to that date, so she's not going to be able to provide that kind of housing if it's still going to be a vacation rental, she'll have to decide one or the other. So, we used to get a blended use, we can't do that anymore. Kind of a tough, she's actually in the middle with us, and has people who are supposed to get out before the summer, and a lot's going to work out. Hopefully the owner system works, you cannot negotiate around it either, you can't have somebody sign a promise in front of the state. They can give you a notice that they're going to battle. So, it, it's really going to cause some pretty serious problems, I think, for us.
Yeah, I read that.
We worked through it, we're a resilient community, and it's a resilient state, but we'll get it done, and, but I am concerned about how it's going to affect us long term.
Yeah. Yeah, I read, I read that, and, uh, that was one of the things that concerned me, too, and also concerning me about the report that we had tonight, anyway. But, uh, at any rate, um, maybe, pretty quick, I don't have an awful lot, except that, like to say that, uh, my birthday was just a couple of weeks ago, and, um, my number two son took me to a Seattle Mariners-Chicago Cubby game.
Oh, fun.
And that is a beautiful Coliseum, and what made it even more lovely was the fact that the Cubbies won eleven to nothing. And it was kind of funny, the seventh inning stretch was to take me out to the home game, or, uh, take me out to, you know, the home team and all that, get you out, ballgame, root, root, root for the home team, but when they got to root, 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 that stadium was so full of Cubby fans that they all yelled out Cubbies.
Oh, that, right.
For Seattle, they thought that they were playing in a, in a, you know, a away game. But at any rate, that was fun, and, um, I would like to thank everyone who has stuck around, uh, I want to thank the council for a good meeting, it could have been a lot, lot more painful, uh, which is my way of looking at it. So, at any rate, thank you, and, um, I'm assuming there are no citizen comments? And the next regular scheduled city council meeting will be June, uh, tenth, it'll be right here, it'll be at six thirty, and so with that in mind, um...
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting, Mr. Mayor, sir.
Yeah. Thank you, I didn't even have to say anything on that one. Question?
Aye.
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 You're out of here.